If you would allow, I also, you didn't read the Appendix A material, and I think you should read that so that that hits on the record at this point. So if someone believes they qualify and they didn't make the list, they can make their presence known. Or if someone believes that there's someone on the list that does not qualify, that can be made known to the council so that the list, when it goes, if it goes into effect, is correct.
And I would like to say that on that list of 10, only three have actually showed that they are in business, showing revenue and paying all the appropriate fees and taxes. Only three.
With the CUP?
No, by paying, by paying in their taxes.
Identify the three?
I think you should identify all 10 at this point.
Is that the list I was referring to?
Yes.
Because there's another Appendix A in the book?
They can amend and give it a different.
We definitely need to give it.
Appointment 67A.
Has Beverly given these out?
Company that's just not A. So, do you want this read? This weekly short-term rental list?
We have a motion on the floor first.
To amend the ordinance to 30 days?
Okay. Any further discussion on the motion? Aiden Seguited, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Zero.
This is 30 days.
Now, there's a motion to read the appendix.
Not actually a motion. It was Mr. Weaver's suggestion.
Actually, it was, it is part of the ordinance, so it should have been read with the ordinance. Or at least the addresses. I don't think all the other material is extraneous at this point, but the addresses, with your permission, are 10 Alamo Street, 3 Armstrong Street, 23 Fairmont Street, 18 Hale Street, 12 Hillside Avenue, 11 Hilton Street, 18 Nut Street, 9 Singleton Street, 10 Singleton Street, and 265 Spring Street.
This is for the record now. All right. So now, Mr. Pennett.
Just want to clarify a question. What does that list of 10 do in conjunction with the ordinance, the way it was read?
If the ordinance is approved, there will be an appendix attached to it. That is putting those on notice that wish to contest that those are not proper, or wish to contest they should properly be on that list for passage and inclusion. So we're putting the knowledge out there of who you're considering at this point may be nonconforming if this ordinance is ever approved and placed on the books.
So what you're saying is if this ordinance is passed, I'm assuming you recognize me.
Fine, you're right.
If this ordinance is passed, then the people on this list are going to be considered nonconforming?
That is to place them on notice at this point, so that they can either request to be added to the list if they're not there, or if someone believes there's someone on there that should not be on there, they can be removed. When the final ordinance is approved, it will be approved with a final list. You can amend to remove or add to that list only until the ordinance is approved. After the ordinance is approved, if somebody didn't make the list, they're out. And if they did make the list, and they shouldn't have, then they'll have to be removed through the way Planning did several properties a few months ago on the other list.
But we have a moratorium, so nobody can be added to the list anyway, right?
If someone can prove that they've been improperly left off, if they got their proper permits and licenses and have been in operation, they should be added at this point before the ordinance is approved for its final approval.
Out of curiosity, City Attorney, how do we prove that they've been in operation?
Well, that becomes a question long. Obviously, there are three on there that are in operation, or at least they show they are, because they're paying tax.
Well.
And it's, it's up to the property owner to show that if it's ever contested in court. And we have went to court before to prove that the 180-day of continuous use of a CUP is not in effect, and the city is prevented to show that.
So, in essence, the nonconforming use pads 180-day rule too?
Yes.
So if they don't pay their taxes, or show any taxes being paid, sales tax, CUP tax, or CFC tax, or something like that, theoretically, they can be shown to be in, theoretically, they can be then shown to be out of compliance and removed from the list.
Okay. Very similar to what Planning did with the, which list did we remove? Are you removing three or four off of?
Tourist lodging.
Tourist lodging.
Now, should, who is responsible a year later, they apply for a permit to be renewed, and yet they haven't paid any of their taxes? Is that the clerk's responsibility?
We do all that. We check all that at least once a year. The planning commission has it in our guidelines to check all the legally nonconforming, and we do that. And also, they check to make sure that their CFC taxes are paid before they get their business license.
So we're saying that these 10, if they would apply for a CUP and were approved, they wouldn't even be on this list, right? They would fall under the approved category? Do we have that in the code currently?
If they otherwise qualify, all of these won't otherwise qualify for a CUP. Some of these are too close.
So, I guess what I'm asking is if five of these do, and they come forward to the Ward of zoning adjustments for CUP, hopefully, that'll happen before?
They're never going to come for a CUP. They're going to be legally nonconforming if you.
No, before we pass this ordinance and they know that they're going to be under a stricter watch than what they care to be.
They can't get a CUP. That's why they're on there. That's why they did that.
That's why I want to, cannot get a CUP.
Most of them are in R1, and they're not allowed CUPs in R1. There's no more tourist lodging.
Ms. Lindblad?
Did you do the 180 days in here because it was 180 days for a CUP for operation? Is that why it's 180 days?
180 days is not an absolute rule, but it's what's typically used to give a person the ability, if their business for some reason has to be closed on a short-term basis, so it's not considered arbitrary and capricious to shut them down if they close the doors for 30 days to fix a water leak, or if they have to repair something due to a small fire or something. It's, it's not an absolute rule. It could be changed to a longer or shorter period, but most codes use 180 days for that type of phrase.
You further?
Well, because 180 days seems long to me for them not to be using their facility.
Thank you.
Because that's what this hinges on. If they don't, if they're, if they have a lapse of operation, so they could take a three-month vacation and then come back and open right up again and keep going, unless I'm multiplying wrong here.
The sentence structure in Section 1 is really, doesn't make any sense.
Might, might, might we save these for second and third readings?
Second. What do you want me to do? We need to move on.
We have amended motion on the floor. And that's not, did we vote on that yet?
No.
Vote on the 30 days.
It's going to second, isn't it?
Yeah, that's as far as we got.
Oh, wait. Yes, it was 5-0.
5-0, okay. Moving right along.
You have not moved to approve the first reading of the ordinance as amended, I don't believe. You've approved the 30-day amendment.
We did.
You are correct.
Okay. All in favor of amending the, approving the amended ordinance, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Thank you. Yes, ma'am.
I move that we suspend the rules and move number 10 in new business up so Mr. Wallace can, doesn't have to sit here.
Second.
The entire meeting.
Aiden Seguited? We suspend the rules, we got a real call, though. Is that correct, Mr. Weaver?
Yes.
Yes.
Mr. Pennett?
Yes.
Mr. Raphael?
Yes.
Ms. Lindblad?
Yes.
Mr. Berry?
Yes.
5-0.
Motion to discuss number 10, so on, in the new business.
Second.
Okay. Where we looking?
I move that we give this resolution a number and read it. For discussion.
Second.
All in favor, say aye. Any opposed?
Can I read the second? I'm sorry, were you the second?
Yes. I was the second.
It's for Resolution 608. What do you have on?
I seem to have, well, I have one somewhere. I think I'm good with it. I've got it.
Okay. A resolution in support of marriage equality, whereas the U.S. Supreme Court has held more than a dozen times that marriage is the key right of the American people. Warren, writing for the majority, stated that "the freedom to marry has long been recognized as one of the vital personal rights essential to the orderly pursuit of happiness by free men." And whereas federal courts in California have ruled that California's Proposition 8, which stripped marriage rights from same-sex couples, violated the U.S. Constitution. And whereas federal courts in Massachusetts, California, New York, and Connecticut have ruled that the federal government's refusal to recognize lawful marriages of same-sex couples under the Defense of Marriage Act, DOMA, is unconstitutional. And whereas the Obama administration announced in February, on February 23, 2011, that the U.S. Justice Department would no longer defend DOMA's denial of federal recognition to marry same-sex couples in federal court. And whereas more than 175 mayors from 32 states have signed a petition in support of marriage equality. And whereas the city of Eureka Springs has already proudly and publicly embraced a diversity of all its residents and its voters by adopting the 2007 Ordinance 2052 that created the state's first domestic partner registry, and two, Ordinance Number 2061, that amended the city's personnel policy handbook to include sexual orientation in its equal employment opportunity policy, and in its unlawful harassment policy. And whereas marriage provides legal and economic protections, including access to health care, parenting rights, property rights, and other protections which are vital to the safety and security of every family. And whereas marriage is a powerful and important affirmation of love and commitment, and a source of social support and recognition. And whereas all couples in loving and committed relationships should be given the opportunity to create stronger and more successful families through civil marriage. Now therefore, be it resolved by the City Council of the City of Eureka Springs, Arkansas, that we support equality in the state of Arkansas and throughout the United States.
Do you have questions? Just question. It's for discussion only, so.
No, my only statement is it would be nice if the Supreme Court would say by happiness of free men and women, but I'm sure that's going to be another matter.
Good.
I move that Resolution Number 608 be read, approved on its first reading.
Just be approved.
Hmm?
There's only one reading.
Oh, there's only one reading. Be approved, period.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Real call, though. Okay.
Final approval.
Is this for the approval? Is it?
Yeah.
Yes, ma'am.
Yes.
Mr. Raphael?
Yes.
Mr. Berry?
Yes.
Ms. Lindblad?
Yes.
Mr. Pennett?
Present.
Sorry, that was so short, Michael. We could have drawn it out an hour or two if you'd like.
I appreciate it, thank you very much.
Motion to approve a 10-minute break. Is your second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Take a 10-minute break.
Okay.
Be back here.
Section 2, that this ordinance shall not amend the conditional uses permitted in R1, R2, and R3. Section 3, legal nonconforming uses existing on the effective date of this ordinance. All legally operating rental businesses renting dwellings in R1, R2, or R3 for seven or less days as of the effective date shall be considered as legal nonconforming uses in accordance with the Eureka Springs Municipal Code. Those businesses are listed in Appendix A. Attached to this ordinance, no additions may be made to this list after the effective date of this ordinance. They are required to continually operate in accordance with all applicable codes of the city, shall be limited to only the use which has been in operation since before the effective date of this ordinance. Continual operation shall be defined for purposes of this ordinance as being open and in business, showing revenue, and paying all appropriate fees and taxes, with no lapse of operation of greater than 180 consecutive days. No expansion of the structure or use shall be allowed for any legal nonconforming use under this ordinance. Any issuance of any building permit for repair, remodeling, or upkeep for any legal nonconforming property under this ordinance with an estimated value of more than 1/4 of the total property value shall terminate the legal nonconforming status of the property. That the legal nonconforming property status under this ordinance shall terminate upon any transferable, transferral of ownership of the subject property, be that transfer be sale, gift, buy, sale, gift, inheritance, or other operation of law. Section 4, severability clause, in the event that any section, subsection, paragraph, subdivision, clause, phrase, or other provision or portion of this ordinance shall be adjudged invalid or unconstitutional, the same shall not affect the validity of this ordinance, code, section, or chapter as a whole, or any part of provision other than the part so decided to be invalid or unconstitutional. And the remaining portions of this ordinance, code, section, or chapter shall remain in effect. Section 5, repeal clause, all ordinances, resolutions, and parts thereof in conflict therewith are hereby repealed to the extent of such conflict.
Mr. Weaver?
I would like to amend Ordinance Number 2167, removing the word "seven" and replacing it with "30."
Section 1?
Well, it's in Section 1 twice.
Levin, finish making the.
I think that's the only place.
It's in Section 3.
Mr. Weaver?
February has 28 days, or 29 days. It's been another year. I would suggest using 28.
I like 30.
Then we can't rent any rental property and it's 30 in February.
Is that a motion?
That was a motion to amend.
30 or 28?
Second.
Is it 30 or 28?
I like 30. I'm sticking to 30. Another loophole.
And you're second?
Second. Just want to clarify where it's all at.
Yeah, where is it, please?
Section 1, it's twice. And Ms. Lindblad stated in Section 3.
Section 3, the second line.
If you would allow, I also, you didn't read the Appendix A material, and I think you should read that so that that hits on the record at this point. So if someone believes they qualify and they didn't make the list, they can make their presence known. Or if someone believes that there's someone on the list that does not qualify, that can be made known to the council so that the list, when it goes, if it goes into effect, is correct.
And I would like to say that on that list of 10, only three have actually showed that they are in business, showing revenue, and paying all the appropriate fees and taxes. Only three.
With the CUP?
No, by paying, by paying in their taxes.
Identify the three?
I think you should identify all 10 at this point.
Is that the list I was referring to?
Yes.
Because there's another Appendix A in the book?
They can amend and give it a different.
We definitely need to give it.
Appointment 67A.
Has Beverly given these out?
Company that's just not A. So, do you want this read? This weekly short-term rental list?
We have a motion on the floor first.
To amend the ordinance to 30 days?
Okay. Any further discussion on the motion? Aiden Seguited? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Zero. Now, there's a motion to read the appendix.
Not actually a motion. It was Mr. Weaver's suggestion.
Actually, it was, it is part of the ordinance, so it should have been read with the ordinance. Or at least the addresses. I don't think all the other material is extraneous at this point, but the addresses, with your permission, are 10 Alamo Street, 3 Armstrong Street, 23 Fairmont Street, 18 Hale Street, 12 Hillside Avenue, 11 Hilton Street, 18 Nut Street, 9 Singleton Street, 10 Singleton Street, and 265 Spring Street.
This is for the record now. All right. So now, Mr. Pennett?
Just want to clarify a question. What does that list of 10 do in conjunction with the ordinance, the way it was read?
If the ordinance is approved, there will be an appendix attached to it. That is putting those on notice that wish to contest that those are not proper, or wish to contest they should properly be on that list for passage and inclusion. So we're putting the knowledge out there of who you're considering at this point may be nonconforming if this ordinance is ever approved and placed on the books.
So what you're saying is if this ordinance is passed, I'm assuming you recognize me. If this ordinance is passed, then the people on this list are going to be considered nonconforming?
That is to place them on notice at this point, so that they can either request to be added to the list if they're not there, or if someone believes there's someone on there that should not be on there, they can be removed. When the final ordinance is approved, it will be approved with a final list. You can amend to remove or add to that list only until the ordinance is approved. After the ordinance is approved, if somebody didn't make the list, they're out. And if they did make the list, and they shouldn't have, then they'll have to be removed through the way Planning did several properties a few months ago on the other list.
But we have a moratorium, so nobody can be added to the list anyway, right?
If someone can prove that they've been improperly left off, if they got their proper permits and licenses and have been in operation, they should be added at this point before the ordinance is approved for its final approval.
Out of curiosity, City Attorney, how do we prove that they've been in operation?
Well, that becomes a question long. Obviously, there are three on there that are in operation, or at least they show they are, because they're paying tax. And it's, it's up to the property owner to show that if it's ever contested in court. And we have went to court before to prove that the 180-day of continuous use of a CUP is not in effect, and the city is prevented to show that.
So, in essence, the nonconforming use pads 180-day rule too?
Yes.
So if they don't pay their taxes, or show any taxes being paid, sales tax, CUP tax, or CFC tax, or something like that, theoretically, they can be shown to be in.
Theoretically, they can be then shown to be out of compliance and removed from the list. Okay. Very similar to what Planning did with the, which list did we remove? Are you removing three or four off of?
The tourist lodging.
Tourist lodging. Now, should, who is responsible a year later, they apply for a permit to be renewed, and yet they haven't paid any of their taxes? Is that the clerk's responsibility?
We do all that. We check all that at least once a year. The planning commission has it in our guidelines to check all the legally nonconforming, and we do that. And also, they check to make sure that their CFC taxes are paid before they get their business license.
So we're saying that these 10, if they would apply for a CUP and were approved, they wouldn't even be on this list, right? They would fall under the approved category? Do we have that in the code currently?
If they otherwise qualify, all of these won't otherwise qualify for a CUP. Some of these are too close.
So, I guess what I'm asking is if five of these do, and they come forward to the Ward of zoning adjustments for CUP, hopefully, that'll happen before?
They're never going to come for a CUP. They're going to be legally nonconforming if you.
No, before we pass this ordinance and they know that they're going to be under a stricter watch than what they care to be. a stricter watch than what they care to be.
They can't get a CUP. That's why they're on there. That's why they did that.
That's why I want, after they count, to see if...
Most of them are in R1, and they're not allowed CUPs in R1. There's no more tourist lodging.
Ms. Lindblad?
Did you do the hundred and eighty days in here, because it was a hundred and eighty days for a CUP for operation? Is that why it's a hundred and eighty days?
Hundred and eighty days is not an absolute rule, but it's what's typically used to give a person the ability, if their business for some reason has to be closed on a short-term basis, so it's not considered arbitrary and capricious to shut them down if they close the doors for thirty days to fix a water leak, or if they have to repair something due to a small fire or something. It's, it's not an absolute rule. It could be changed to a longer or shorter period, but most codes use a hundred and eighty days for that type of phrase.
Any further?
Well, because a hundred and eighty days seems long to me for them not to be using their facility...
Good night, everyone. Thank you.
Because that's what this hinges on. If they don't, if they're, if they have a lapse of operation, so they could take a three-month vacation, and then come back and open right up again and keep going. Unless I'm multiplying wrong here.
The sentence structure in section one is really, doesn't make any sense.
Might, might we save these for second and third readings?
We don't want to do. We need to move on.
We have amended motion on the floor. And that's not, did we vote on that yet?
No.
Vote on the thirty days.
It's going to be seconded. Yeah, that's as far as we got.
Oh, wait. Yes, it was five zero.
Five zero, okay. Moving right along.
You have not moved to approve the first reading of the ordinance as amended, I don't believe. You've approved the thirty-day amendment.
We did.
You are correct.
Okay. All in favor of amending the, approving the amendment, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Thank you. Yes, ma'am.
I move that we suspend the rules and move number ten in new business up, so Mr. Wallace doesn't have to sit here.
Second.
Entire meeting.
Maiden, seconded. We suspend the rules, we got to real call, though. Is that correct, Ms. Weaver?
Yes.
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 Ms. Lindblad?
Yes.
Mr. Berry?
Yes.
Motion to discuss number ten, so out, under new business.
Second.
Okay. Go with us.
How many do we give this resolution a number and read it for discussion?
Second.
All in favor, say aye. Any opposed?
I'm sorry, were you the second?
Yes.
Do we have one?
I seem to have, well, I had one somewhere. Oh, I think I'm good with it.
I've got it. A resolution in support of marriage equality. Whereas, the U.S. Supreme Court has held more than a dozen times that marriage is the key right of the American people. And in the nineteen sixty-seven landmark case, Loving versus Virginia, three eight eight, U.S. one, nineteen sixty-seven, Chief Justice Warren, writing for the majority, stated that "The freedom to marry has long been recognized as one of the vital personal rights essential to the orderly pursuit of happiness by free men." And whereas, federal courts in California have ruled that California's Proposition Eight, which stripped marriage rights from same-sex couples, violated the U.S. Constitution. And whereas, federal courts in Massachusetts, California, New York, and Connecticut have ruled that the federal government's refusal to recognize lawful marriages of same-sex couples under the Defense of Marriage Act, DOMA, is unconstitutional. And whereas, the Obama administration announced in February, on February twenty-third, two thousand and eleven, that the U.S. Justice Department would no longer defend DOMA's denial of federal recognition to marry same-sex couples in federal court. And whereas, more than one hundred and seventy-five mayors from thirty-two states have signed a petition in support of marriage equality. And whereas, the city of Eureka Springs has already proudly and publicly embraced the diversity of all its residents and its residents by adopting the two thousand and seven, ordinance two thousand and fifty-two, that created the state's first domestic partner registry, and two, ordinance number two thousand and sixty-one, that amended the city's personnel policy handbook to include sexual orientation in its equal employment opportunity policy, and in its unlawful harassment policy. And whereas, marriage provides legal and economic protections, including access to health care, parenting rights, property rights, and other protections which are vital to the safety and security of every family. And whereas, marriage is a powerful and important affirmation of love and commitment, and a source of social support and recognition. And whereas, all couples in loving and committed relationships should be given the opportunity to create stronger and more successful families through civil marriage. Now therefore be it resolved by the city council of the city of Eureka Springs, Arkansas, that we support equality in the state of Arkansas and throughout the United States.
You have questions? Just question. It's for discussion only, so...
No, my only statement is it would be nice if the Supreme Court would say by happiness of free men and women, but I'm sure that's going to be another matter.
Okay.
I move that resolution number six oh eight be read, approved on its first reading.
Just be approved.
Oh, there's only one reading. Be approved, period.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Real call, though.
No.
Final approval.
Is this where they approve?
Mr. DeVito?
Yes.
Mr. Raphael?
Yes.
Mr. Berry?
Yes.
Ms. Lindblad?
Yes.
Mr. Pennant?
Present.
Sorry, that was so short, Michael. We could have drawn it out an hour or two if you'd like.
I appreciate it. Thank you very much.
Motion to approve a ten-minute break. Is your second?
Yep.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Take a ten-minute break.
Okay.
We'll be back in session from recess. We are to number four on our unfinished business. City attorneys review auditorium agreement of two thousand and thirteen. Much, yes?
I make a motion to suspend the rules and discuss item one under new business.
Maiden, seconded. All in favor, say aye. Oh, we're going to roll call it. Sorry.
Just about twice.
Who is it? Second, please?
Mr. Raphael.
For your perusal.
Mr. Pennant?
Yes.
Who's that?
Mr. Berry?
Yes.
Mr. Raphael?
Yes.
Mr. DeVito?
Yes.
Ms. Lindblad?
Yes.
Five zero.
Okay. Motion to discuss.
Motion to discuss.
Okay. I hear them, I see. Okay. Close up.
Can we do a second November meeting in Tuesday the twenty-seventh? On Wednesday the twenty-first, but that's Thanksgiving Eve. She's probably not there.
Mickey, would you shut the door?
I think they have a planning on the twenty-seventh in here.
Can you push that door?
I checked to make sure, and the chair said no.
Do what? Do what?
I checked with the chair, and the chair said no, there is no planning meeting on Tuesday the twenty-seventh.
Okay. Yes, sir.
Is there any possibility for consideration if we had the second November meeting on Monday the twenty-sixth, and move the second, or the first meeting in December to the third Monday?
It's a trial, I think. Is there a trial on the twenty-sixth?
Right, and the jury probably needs this room on Monday the twenty-sixth.
Where would we meet normally?
On the twenty-sixth.
If it was a regular Monday, where would we be meeting?
Here.
I checked with the ladies across the hall, and they, they said they couldn't, there was no way of knowing whether the room would, would be available at all. But I don't know the answer to your question.
You're saying that there's a jury trial, and they're going to be using this room on the twenty-sixth?
Yes, sir.
That was my question. Where would we be meeting if, on a normal meet, I mean?
Well, Mr. Raphael is correct that the two options are, at this point, Tuesday the twenty-seventh.
And Wednesday the twenty-first.
And Wednesday the twenty-first, yes.
Tuesday the twenty-seventh, say.
You know, that was changed, and I checked with the, because it is new, it is Thanksgiving Eve, and four of their members will be gone. They're going to have their meeting on Tuesday the twentieth. That's why Wednesday the twenty-first is open.
Tuesday the twenty-seventh, and the December meeting on the nineteenth?
Let's do one at a time, please.
Makes a difference.
What kind of jury trial are they having?
I did not ask that question.
Because if they're on the twenty-sixth, they very well may be carried over to the twenty-seventh. I would assume they're starting on Monday. A lot of jury trials go two to three days.
Yep.
Unless it's a very simple issue, they'll, they'll go into the second day, most likely. Because it takes half a day almost to pick a jury.
If we follow our schedule, where would we be?
So are we back to the nineteenth?
Let's ask.
Or the twenty-first?
A lot of people be leaving town for Thanksgiving on the nineteenth.
Is anybody here leaving for Thanksgiving?
I'm not.
No.
It's too close to Thanksgiving.
What, the twenty-first?
Yes.
Or the twentieth?
It's also my day off, which I hardly ever get.
Oh, wow. You're going to get one on Thursday.
Ooh, wow, a day off.
What about the twentieth or the nineteenth?
Each state has the twentieth.
Oh. What happened with the nineteenth?
A week from today. Yeah, a week from tomorrow.
Sorry, back to, oh, we blew the twenty-seventh off. What about the twenty-eighth?
No.
Oh. Well, there's got to be some day.
What was wrong with the twenty-seventh?
Twenty-seventh.
Jury trial.
I'm not worried about the jury. I'm willing to take my chances on that.
No, twenty-seventh is true. No jury trial.
Yeah, yeah, the twenty-seventh, then.
Let's tend to, let's say the twenty-seventh and see what happens.
Run-up election, but that shouldn't...
Okay, all in favor, Tuesday, twenty-seventh?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. That was November twenty...
Yeah, the election won't be here now.
Second issue is the meeting in December. Motion to discuss. Yes, sir.
Still moved.
Second.
Okay. Yes, sir.
With, with the meeting on the twenty-seventh, I make a motion that we move the second Monday meeting to the third Monday.
Seventeenth.
Seventeenth.
Seventeenth. Motion made for the seventeenth of December.
The second, I'm sorry.
Mickey, would you be our calendar girl and put December up there, please?
We're already scheduled for the tenth of December.
Yeah, I think you can pull that up so we can see.
Didn't think we had been, didn't think we had scheduled for December yet.
Okay, we're already scheduled for the tenth. Just, just that one.
Just that one? Okay. Tenth of December's the only one we have now, so...
What if we did the thirteenth and the seventeenth? Would that work? I mean, the third and the seventeenth, if we just moved our meeting off the tenth, it doesn't have to be there, does it? Oh, but the twenty-seventh, that would only be a week after the twenty-seventh, wouldn't
Yes, it's...
But you say Park is on that Monday?
Yeah.
Parks is on Monday.
About the sixth and the twentieth.
Why can't we have it on the tenth?
I thought this was going to be your schedule.
It is.
Well, because we can't have one on the twenty-fourth. And that would only, so we've got to pick another, if we're going to do it on the tenth, then we got to pick something else there. About the twentieth. The tenth and the twentieth. That's ten days apart. Almost two weeks.
Y'all should get your budget by Friday to have it on the first of December. So I'll give you a week to study it for the tenth, if you address it then. Not to have to pick a special date for a meeting, a special meeting. If you're going to address the budget.
Well, Mickey's arm's going to fall off pretty soon. It's always the first for everything.
Okay, so we're definitely doing one on the tenth. Okay, I'll give notice, I'm not going to be here. I'll be out of town at my daughter's wedding.
On the tenth?
Yes. I figured with it being so close to the, the one that we agreed to on the twenty-seventh, that a delay would be...
The tenth and the seventeenth? No.
So have you got another suggestion?
It's really, it's...
No, I'm, if I'm named, that's fine. I just won't be here.
All right, so...
Okay, so what's the word?
I don't know.
So the discussion is, is are we having a second meeting in December? So it stands.
Well, I'll be in town, I won't be gone anywhere.
Are you here the 18th?
Are you gonna be home?
Not, not, I'll be gone week of Christmas.
Are you gonna be gone, James?
No, I'll be here, but I think one meeting in December is plenty.
Take a, special meeting for the budget.
I'll, I'll be here.
Okay, so we're staying with the 10th and that's it? Is that my understanding? Okay, all in favor of the 10th? Say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
abstain.
Okay. Okay, all right.
I'll, I'll say aye.
Deal with that one. Okay. All right, now, unless we want to spin the rules and go back and do something else, we're back to number four. City Attorney's Review Auditorium Agreement 2013.
I would to discuss.
Yes, sir.
I would move to table that until the next meeting.
To a second?
Yep.
Did I hear a second?
I have a second.
Okay. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Postpone. Number five is ordinance number 2166, voting by ordinance to be the second reading.
I move to read ordinance 2166 by title only. I just spin the rules and read it by title only.
To a second?
Second.
Okay, we have to do a roll call.
Ms. Lynn Bled?
Yes.
Mr. Panoff?
No.
Mr. Barry?
No.
Mr. Raphael?
Yes.
Mr. DeVito?
No.
Two yeses, three nos.
Yeah, so we move on to number six. Y'all in bag committee? Is the, is your motion? Yes, Mr. Panoff?
Move to postpone the next meeting and this balance can be here.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? This is number seven, discussion code, section 4.48, admitting city permitted or city sanctioned. Motion to discuss.
I would move to defer this to the next meeting.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Postpone. Number eight is your recon report. Motion to discuss.
Still moved.
Second.
May I second it? Floor's open.
Shut your name by it.
It's got your name there.
What do you, what do you wanna know, you didn't find that last time?
I don't know. I don't know why it's on there.
I don't either.
I'd move to remove it from the agenda.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? It's out. Number nine is ramifications of voluntary tax for cemetery commission, Mr. Barry and Mr. DeVito.
I'd move to table this to our next meeting.
I have a question.
No.
Yes, sir.
We move to discuss.
Second.
A quick question. Mr. Clark, do we find anything about any requirements for voluntary tax, whether we can have a millage?
Uh, voluntary tax has to go with labor or program.
But do we have enough in our millage, balance in the millage tax to be able to put it to the people?
Nice way to put it.
Lonnie, would you get up at the mic, please?
I, I think we have five mills.
We got five mills that, but on a voluntary tax, as I understand it, you would take it before the people and it could be whatever millage you could choose.
I was under the impression we couldn't do more than five mills.
Well, if it's voluntary, now, the other is, is actual tax on real and personal property within city. And that's the five, and it can be at, I think it's now at 4.4, so there's six tenths of a mill there.
Do you have any idea what six tenths of a mill would raise?
Not at this time, no.
Can you check out and see what six tenths of a mill would raise?
I can.
Get back to us next meeting?
Sure.
I'll move to table this to the next meeting.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Table. Now, number 10 has been postponed. Brings us to new business. My best recollection on this is number four. Now, the clerk's case. Motion to discuss.
Still moved.
Second. May I second it? Floor's open. Mr. Panoff?
Re, reeducating, are we under a time restraint based on the last meeting as far as making a decision?
I'd say 90 days.
They filed an, an appeal of the judge's order.
Who's they?
The municipal league. There is no exact deadline of when the court will hear that, but most likely they will hear it within 90 days of when it was filed. And until once they make that decision, then it's probably going to trial if the court does not rule in favor of the municipal league at that point. So you are under some kind of time restraint, but no one can tell you exactly how long does the court acts when they are ready. They're in the briefing period right now, I believe, so there's probably still another two to four weeks of briefing. I don't have an exact schedule for that. And then they'll make a decision when they've had a chance to look at it.
Mr. Panoff?
For clarification, unless we make a determination otherwise, correct?
Unless you make a determination and there's a settlement, which we was, then the municipal league would have to withdraw the appeal.
Ms. Lynn Bled?
Their appeal was to a motion to dismiss, or?
Yes.
That was it?
Yes.
You said what, for two to three weeks?
Um, 90 days from when it's filed is typical. And it was filed, I believe, approximately three weeks ago, two weeks ago. But it could happen a lot quicker, or it could happen a lot later. It's not, there's nothing carved in stone when you send one to Little Rock. I sent one to Little Rock one time and waited almost a year and a half on it. I've sent others down there and got a response within, after the briefing schedule, within three weeks, four weeks.
So the only thing we're looking at now is the briefing period, two to three weeks?
They're in the briefing period now, I don't know what the deadline is on that exactly. The municipal league hasn't shared that with me.
Ms. Lynn Bled?
So if I understand the municipal league lawyer correctly, if we decided to settle, the municipal league, our insurance would pay the settlement, right?
That is incorrect in my understanding.
That is incorrect?
That is incorrect.
Okay, so why is, wouldn't our insurance from the municipal league pay for this since it was a city vehicle that was used to clean out her sewer?
Because you would not be admitting it's a city vehicle, you would be making this settlement. There would be no admission of what happened. And so they would not be obligated.
Well, what if we admitted what happened and that it was our equipment?
I don't think they're giving you that option. They're your insurance carrier, you'd have to turn around and sue the municipal league if they didn't choose to pay.
So we have insurance for nothing, in other words, with the municipal league, because they don't want to pay for settlements that they should be paying for since that vehicle is insured with the municipal league? So are we wasting our money being insured with the municipal league?
You are drawing legal conclusions that they are willing to defend and are defending in court at this time in an adverse position to what they're defending by your statement.
Say that again.
Your statement is-
Too many adverses in there.
Your, your statement is in the adversity to their position that they are currently defending in court. They're defending this case as if they expect to win. And you're saying that they can't win.
So in other words, you're saying they're defending it, they're defending it and if they win, then no, it gets nothing?
That is correct.
But there's no way that, there's no way that our, in any case then, that our insurance would ever pay anybody?
If we went through a lawsuit and the lawsuit was decided against the city after trial and the finding was that it was because it was a municipal vehicle involved, then they should be on the line for the $25,000 that normal liability is.
So in other words, if anybody has anything happen to them in the city to get, like a city vehicle or anything, they have to go to trial to get our insurance to pay them?
Your carrier has the option of settling if they believe it's a case that is not defendable. At this point, the league is not saying that it's not defendable. They're saying there is a risk. And the risk is, from what the judge said, that if it was a jury verdict, he might allow the jury to find above the normal liability limit. And he might, the state legislature might choose this as an opportunity to change state law.
To say that cities wouldn't be responsible for things that they do and things that happen to their citizens? Yep.
Potentially.
I'd like to give you all some numbers for your research regarding the definition of operation by state codes. If you would look at 21-9303, section C1. This is the first one.
What was 21 what?
Can you just get us copies of that?
Yes, I can. So you have a little advanced. The other numbers are 27-19-204, definition of driver. And 27-19210, definition of operator. And then the DWI code 5-65103, section A.
Say that again, please?
5-65-103. I'm sorry?
Oh, go ahead.
That's all.
On the last one, is it a large A or a small A?
Small A.
565-?
103.
103.
Small A.
Y'all can-
And that first one was 21?
Okay, one more time, it's 21, the first one was 21-9-303. 2719204. 2719210. And 5-65103.
On that first one, it was a small C1?
Small C1, yes, that's correct. And there's no subdivisions in 204 and 210, so. Yes, sir.
Do we have any figure that she's looking for to consider, or?
No, sir. I don't think any number has been given to us. What, what you know is what I know and that's what the men said right here, that's the first we'd heard about.
I thought she asked for $1,000 from the city.
This is gonna be a settlement, I don't think it-
We, we tried and then they refused to have it settled.
Mr., Mr. Parker said, no discussion, and that was the last we heard. Yes, sir.
That's what's going on. When it first started.
Second.
May I second it? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Postpone. Number six, statute regarding counsel to decide number of police officers. Motion to discuss.
Well, I'd, I'd like to move to postpone that since this balance is not here.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried. Just for sake of clarification, a while ago, it was to pull number seven off the agenda, not to postpone it till we can do further research on it. I was a little hesitant getting it on there, thinking we were under time constraints, but apparently that is not the truth. Number eight is third quarter report, ACA 1443, file 06. Motion to discuss.
Still moved.
Please.
Floor's open.
Ladies and gentlemen, here's the third quarter report. Anything to be downstairs? Bank reconciliation, receipts, payroll, and the clearing account. And fixed assets. The bond issue booklet isn't here, but it's in Lonnie's office, so if you want to take a look at that.
So we don't get a copy?
If you want a copy, I'll be happy to provide it for you.
Number nine on our new business is the 2012 budget resolution, budget adjustment resolution. Motion to discuss.
Still moved.
Second.
Second.
Floor's open.
You don't have anything to consider, do you?
What's before you, what you have in your paperwork.
Stand with Ken, please.
What if I should have a copy of it?
It's the first time I've seen it.
Yeah, I don't have it.
This is the original one. From the first time before the-
Yeah.
Cemetery, cemetery commission. Here's some extras. Extras.
Yeah.
Got one, James?
Yeah, easier than finding it.
Yes, sir.
Based on a discussion with the, since we've got to this point, our resolution that set the budget in discussions with the Legislative Audit Committee members in regards to ramifications and definitions of overspending, their, their point of contention was unless it is outside of a particular department, that any adjustments within that department, if there's money available, can be made without any action from the council. That's a normal budgetary process. And if I remember correctly, most of these decreases, increases, if I'm wrong, tell me, are, are moves that could be handled without consideration from this table, or a great majority of them could be taken care of. And I'd like to see if I clean, make a motion that those that are departmentally covered, increase, decrease, be reviewed and removed from the resolution.
A second, I-
A second? Need further discussion on it? Yes, sir.
Would it be premature to be adding in the possible $30,000 for the school road in here?
It can be amended.
As long as we're-
Mr. Weaver, can it be amended?
Adding and subtracting things.
To reflect that and-
Mr.? I don't know that it needs to be, isn't already in the- It's already there. Okay.
Okay. Okay.
Okay, yes, sir.
I know I had my eyes opened and, you know, it does seem like a responsible way of doing budgetary business, and I've changed my overall opinion of overspending, and I would truly like to see this before we even address it, because these are our expense codes that aren't even addressed in our last resolution that set up the budget. So if there are changes, it would need to be based on the budget resolution that set up the budget back in late January, where it was by specific codes like general fund. Would be a lot less than what this would be.
Any further? So who was second? Or who was second?
A motion that occurred a little while ago.
I seconded it.
That anything within a department be removed from this resolution. Is that, so you're reiterating the same motion, basically?
Okay. It was made in second. Everybody understand the motion?
No. I don't know. I mean, if we don't need... Are these, Lonnie, are these all within the departments?
Well, you have to look at the code over here, 01, 00. What's within the department? The Arts Council, which we need, that's the path to stand there. The Audit Board, that's...
You come down to the 10, the dash 10, 55 hundreds. That would be within the same department. The 11s be in the same department. 12, 14, and so on and so forth. Those would be in the same department.
So they all are in the same department?
Well, and all of them that's 01 are in the general fund. Of course, 10 is the street fund. So those are, those that are all in the 10, they're within the same department, street. General capital is 12, and water sewer is 80. So those are all within those departments.
So we don't have to do anything then? I mean, as long as they're not overrunning their bottom line, then we don't have to do anything?
That's what he asked. Could be down.
Oh, you have to do that, okay.
But overall, it's just about balanced out to zero.
Any further?
So we're basically going back to our original ordinance that we started out with, just about. Well, no, you had one that we had, this was based when we asked for it to be broken out into departments, line items like this. We had a smaller one that was on a one-page. Yep.
Okay. Does everybody understand the motion? They need to reread it?
Yes.
Okay. Please reread it one more time.
Mr. Pennell made a motion that expenditures within a department be removed from the resolution. Changes within a department.
Okay. And it was seconded by Mr. Raphael.
Yes.
Did I say that the way you...
Well, basically, can I amend that?
Yes.
I'll amend that, that if, if there are no total washes, that the finance director give us the new resolution at the next meeting.
Okay.
Second that.
Okay. Any further clarification? Fine. If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. And last...
No, not last.
We got a number 11.
Move to the...
Check the signatures. Yes, sir. Is it second? Check signatures.
Second. What is number 11? I don't even know. I didn't even write it down.
It was check signatures. Yes, sir, go ahead.
Postpone to the next meeting.
Okay. Postpone. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Agenda setting?
No.
None of you above? Going, going, gone? Counsel comments? Okay.
Yes, sir. Discussion of current signatories for city written checks.
Second.
Any further? If that's it, then move on to council comments. Ms. Lynn Bled.
I'd like to thank everyone that came out and voted in the last election, and I'd especially like to say everyone that voted for me, I'd like to say thank you for your vote of confidence and let you know that I really appreciated it.
Mr. Berry.
Basically, I'd like to say the same thing. Thank everybody for coming out and voting, and especially voting for me for the state representative. And it's been a pleasure and a privilege to be on the city council for the last two sessions, I guess, and wish good luck to the new councils coming in.
Mr. DeVito.
I would like, excuse me, I'd like to echo those comments on thanking everybody who took part in the democratic process, and I'd like to thank my wife Teresa for taking on the food and wine weekend, which I was ready to pull the plug on, and I thought she did a great job and fought her efforts.
Mr. Pennell.
Second Mr. DeVito's sentiments. Thanks, everybody, for voting.
Mr. Parker, Mr. Raphael. I'm sorry? Okay, okay. I don't have any at this time, so we can go home. Motion to dismiss.
Move to adjourn.
Yeah, that one too. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?